Good evening and welcome to the City of Lenora City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 21, 2019. We welcome you here this evening. And as we normally do, we will begin in just a minute with a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to our flag of our country. As we go to that, I would like to, for you tonight, to please keep your thoughts and prayers and continually for all of our departments of this great city who have done so much in this last few weeks. We've had a lot of great things going on. Police Week, we had a great week then. Public Utilities, Clean Water, great things happening. And of course, we're celebrating Public Works Week this week, tomorrow morning with the Public Works Breakfast. And we appreciate all that is done with all of our departments of this city. Thank you for caring for the city, taking care of it. And tonight, we would like to keep you in our thoughts and prayers as we continue moving forward. Please keep Moore's Will again in your thoughts on the awesome, their officer there, and though their family is still struggling with that, and will be for a long, long time. But let's pray that we never have that problem, and that we ever, never face things like that. So anyway, if you will, please join us now as we rise to pray together. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, as we get started, we have a special guest with us that we'd like to bring up and catch some great reports from, Mr. Brian Moore, the Executive Director of the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce. Brian, welcome. We're glad to have you. And please catch us up on your life. There's been a lot of things going on since you came here. And
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Distinguished members of City Council, it's an honor to be here tonight, representing the Chamber of Commerce and all the great things that we do for our community, in support, in partnership with your staff and all of your great departments. We have had, I would say, since March 4, 77 days of excitement happening at the Chamber of Commerce, moving forward with plans and initiatives to make sure we're engaging our community, our education platforms, and tourism. So we have an incredible opportunity in front of us. I won't bore you with the details of my 100-day plan, but it was fairly aggressive. And I feel like we are well on our way with accomplishing all of those items on our 100-day plan. Ironically, that 100-day plan ends in a couple of weeks, right before we launch into this big thing called BlackBerry Festival. So I'm thankful for your staff and your department heads. Kalen and Kyle have done a fantastic job for us, working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to pull off a very successful BlackBerry event. Today, we had an opportunity to visit with a number of your department heads, and it was really a fantastic collaborative effort to make sure that every part of that festival goes well, and is a very good experience for all of our tourists and guests and residents that have an opportunity to enjoy that. So I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to come say hello, take our Chamber of Commerce into a whole new direction in support of our entire community, and just remembering the fact that we are about commerce, and every part of commerce that we have to take care of, our members, making sure we're providing good learning and value platforms for them as we move forward. So very excited, and thank you for the opportunity to say hello. And you guys are doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for our partnership with our great chamber. We've certainly enjoyed it, and we'll continue to enjoy it. We look forward to great things as it keeps moving forward. We do have one of your chairs here sitting next to, on this board, so we know that he's keeping busy with a lot of great things going on with that. But we're
That's right.
very pleased, and we know that great things are coming. Look forward to July and the BlackBerry Festival. A lot of people already talking about it and discussing it. I know you're rapidly trying to put plans together for that, so we appreciate that, and look forward to our partnership with you on moving forward with that, and many other things
Many other things, thank you.
that we're doing, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any questions of Brian? While he's here, anybody?
Welcome to Lenora.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Brian's done a fantastic job. March the 4th was his first day, and he's done just a great thing. So we're excited to have him on board. I think the rest of the counties is seeing that, that we've had the ribbon cuttings and several events with Google and the fuel. We're doing this Young Professionals. I mean, the idea is just keep rolling, and the attendance is great, the excitement is there. So we're excited to have Brian on board. And like you said, man, let's keep rocking and rolling, man, let's do it, do it. So excited about where the chamber's headed.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and being with us.
My pleasure.
Okay, we will move on. We do not have any matters that were scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent and agenda items, which consist of minutes of our City Council meeting of Tuesday, May 7, 2019. Item B is a resolution. This is for a more powerful North Carolina campaign. If we approve this resolution, supporting the more powerful NC campaign against the opioid crisis in North Carolina and the nation as requested by the North Carolina League of Municipalities and North Carolina Attorney General Josh Stein. The opioid epidemic has imposed significant and continuing costs on our health care, our criminal justice, and our social service systems. And it continues to be a problem. While we were at the League of Municipalities last week in Hickory Conference, Attorney General Josh Stein spoke and asked if we will, us at other cities across the state would do that. So we are doing that. This is a long resolution. I'm not going to read all of this to you, if you certainly want to know it. And I'm going to ask Chief Phelps, if you can add some things to it, since, and what's going on, so they'll understand that. And then I'll come back to the consent agenda in just a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I want to thank the mayor and the members of council, Mr. Hildebrand, that brought this campaign to our attention from the conference last week. We, I was not personally aware of this initiative until that information got relayed. We have joined as a partnering agency. If you go on the website, you'll see our police patch as one of the partnering agencies with this. This is an epidemic in our community and in communities across this state and across our nation. And it, the addiction rates, it is a very hard problem for law enforcement to tackle. And we have seen in law enforcement that there's, we can't just arrest our way out of this problem. And so we are having to look for resources that are in our communities to help get opiates off the street, to equip officers with Narcan and things to help combat the effects of opiates. There are men and women, young men and women, old men and women, that are alive today because of the officers carrying Narcan in the City of Lenora and across this county, that were able to administer it and revive them until EMS could get there. There are a lot of different steps that the Lenora Police Department, the City of Lenora, and other partnering agencies in this county that are working together to try to combat this. So we appreciate the support. We appreciate the recognition.
We appreciate what you're doing with that. I know it's difficult out there when you deal with these kind of things. There are some of the facts on there. There were 12 Caldwell resident unintentional opioid overdose deaths in the county, 73 Caldwell resident opioid overdose ED visits, 7,926,000 opioid pills were dispensed to Caldwell County residents. I mean, it's unbelievable. And there were seven reported community naloxone, is that?
Naloxone.
Naloxone reversals in Caldwell County that were done. So that's just a couple of things that we've added to this resolution in support of it. So it is a problem all over this country, and certainly we want to be a part to do anything we can to stamp this out in any way we possibly can. So thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So that's the second part of it. And then item C is a service agreement. This is for engineering services. Recommendation is approval to negotiate a service agreement with McGill Associates of Hickory, North Carolina, for the engineering services for the design and construction of the Crossroads Sewer Line Improvement Project. Note, the city received proposals from four engineering firms, and following their view of the proposals with city staff, it is believed that McGill Associates is the best qualified firm for the work required for this project. I did want to follow up with that. There are a number of great engineering firms that we are dealing with, and others have things that they're doing with us in the city right now. So we are trying to be obviously very competitive with what we do, and we look to look at this and judge what we think is the best fitting that particular project as we move forward. And in this case, McGill Associates was chosen to be that way. So I know that
It's a good position to be in, to have so many qualified.
It is, it is. And we're very honored that we have several others that we have projects going with, so that we know that we can go to those different firms when we need to be able to do that.
Yeah, no, and that's very important, too, to kind of keep every, different sets of eyes on different projects. I think it's important that we begin to reach out and maybe explore some of these other firms a little bit more in depth, just to make sure that we love McGill, of course. We love all these guys, but I think it's a fair process, and I think a lot of people would like to have a shot at some of these projects.
Right.
And we have a ton of good firms, like you said, that I think can address it. So yeah, I'm glad that we continue to have good bids from good quality engineering firms.
Yes. And I know, Radford, you were working with many of those, and Jared, too. So we know that it's great that we have this ability to be able to look and know that we're getting the best possible help we can when we have these projects. So anyway, that's your consent agenda items A, B, and C. So any discussion on any item, or I'll look for a motion for those?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just real quick on the opioid thing. Again, I applaud the efforts of Chief and everybody. And I think what a lot of people don't ever realize, it's not a poor problem, it's not a rich problem, it's not a black problem, it's not a white problem, it's not a brown problem. It's every, it's all of us, and it affects all of us at all levels. So I think, don't ever think it's not me, because I guarantee you, everybody in this room probably knows somebody that's been affected, whether it's a family or a friend. And so I'm glad that we're taking the steps to kind of, to join the march and the mission to bring awareness to it. So I just, I wanted to say that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
May I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented?
I have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to accept the consent agenda items as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries 4-0 tonight. We are missing a couple of council members who were, Mr. Purdue was out of town, and Councilmember Thomas also is out of town. So we wish them well in their travels. And happy birthday, by the way, it's Councilmember Thomas's birthday today. So, and if you see her, wish her a happy birthday at some point. I don't know how old she is, I'm not even going to attempt to say.
She celebrates the whole month of May.
She's, the month of May is Chrissy Thomas' birthday month. Okay, we'll move then on to, we do not, oh, this is a time on our agenda for requests of any petitions of any citizens. And I will now, if anybody in the audience would like to address the council, please do so at this time. And seeing no one, we will go ahead to, we do not have reports of our boards and commissions tonight, so we'll move to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor of council, several items tonight for your information. First one, the city council will have a budget work session on Thursday, May 23, 6:00 PM. That's Third Floor City Hall. The Parks and Recreation will host the end of school blast from noon to 6:00 at Mulberry Rec Center on Saturday, May 25. Also, there's an event, I think, called Touch a Truck, which is a new event they're putting together. I know that Joshua Harris has been working on that with the departments to go back and get folks out there. So I encourage youth, but anybody that's interested in what we do as a city to come out for that.
What is that?
Touch a truck.
Touch a truck?
What is that?
I will defer to Mr.
You have some trucks.
Yeah.
You get to come out and touch them.
You get to touch the trucks.
Okay.
And get in them and check them out, talk to them.
So a fire truck, a police car.
Oh, okay. Thank you for explaining what that means.
A garbage truck.
Fire truck or a garbage truck.
We got some of the Public Works trucks and
I think the big hit will be the factor truck in the sewer plant. I think, from the sewer plant, we probably
We have a fire truck, we'll have the boom truck from Public Works, the factor truck.
Okay.
Everybody wants to be in the factor truck, for sure.
But also on Saturday, on May 25, the pool, outdoor pool opens up at the Aquatic and Fitness Center, which is a, begins a busy summer for us up there. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 27, in observance of Memorial Day. The American Legion will have an event on the plaza downtown at noon on Memorial Day.
That's at 10.
At 10.
It's 10 o'clock.
Okay, 10 AM, correction there. Committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, May 28, 8:30. That's Third Floor City Hall. And then also, the foothills regional airport authority will meet on Wednesday, May 29, at noon, and that's at the airport.
Okay.
With that, I'm going to step down and go talk about the 1920 budget.
While he's doing that, Mr. Story, quickly, how is baseball opened up well for the Recreation Department?
Baseball's open up well.
Okay.
Girl softball's playing well.
Good.
Good weather so far.
Great.
A couple rainouts, but good weather.
Yeah, how many, 20 teams, 18 teams?
19 teams.
19 teams.
19 teams. That's ages four to 15 years old.
Great.
So it's doing well.
Good. Thank you for your work on that. Back to you, sir.
At this time, I think City Clerk Cannon's handing out the budget. You can follow along on the presentation on the wall. Maybe easier, it's concise, and you can read that tonight as you try to go to sleep. It may be beneficial for you. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 15911, I'm pleased to present to you the recommended 1920, or not 1920, 2019 and 2020 budget. This budget was developed based on priorities you set back in February and March at our council retreats. First of all, your six highest priorities ranked were employee compensation, housing, healthy infrastructure, economic development, US 321, and community beautification, as well as public engagement. So all of our goals, we try to go back and meet those throughout the budget document. The general fund totals $17,362,391. That budget is balanced and addresses those goals I just mentioned. There's no tax increase. I think this will be the seventh straight year of keeping that rate at 58 cent. It also includes the rescue ratings tax of .0085 per 100. The only increase we have in the general fund this year, we're recommending a dollar increase in the solid waste fee, and that's the fund, the second brush truck for us to go back and get more quickly out to pick up brush. It's been a need, I know, addressed by council on several occasions. But all other general fund fees are unchanged. So I want you to know that. Here's just a graph of the general fund. You can see that public safety makes up over half of our budget, Recreation 10, Public Works 23, and then the rest make up the difference there. The water and wastewater fund, the total there is $8,941,688. As we talked about at a meeting several months ago, we recommend a 1.1% water rate increase and a 2.5% sewer rate increase this year. For the average rate payer, that'll be an 87 cent increase per month. I would note that the CPI for February, which we base our rates on, was a 1.1% increase. So that kind of sits the benchmark for that. But all other water, wastewater fees are unchanged in the proposed budget. There's a graph showing our water fund and sewer fund, which water makes up over 55% of that budget. The highlights of the budget, core services are continued. We think that we're trying to hit your targets. Employee compensation, we're proposing a 3% cost of living increase beginning in January 2020. We also fund the 1.2% increase in the local government retirement system increases that they have scheduled for the next three years, so that's included. Health insurance, this year, we had no increase in our premiums, so we're maintaining our current benefit levels as is. As you're aware, we competitively bid out our property liability workers' compensation insurance. We got those bids back in. We'll address those at Committee of the Whole next week. But it looks like we'll stay with our current provider, and the premiums are relatively flat, and we should have improved coverage based on that review. The other highlights in the budget, street resourcing, increasing that to 385 this year. That's $10,000 increase over last year. Fire station number three, hope to open that around July 1. The budget includes the debt service on that, plus the new operating expenses of operating out of that facility. Downtown, one of our focuses this year is try to go back and do some renovations and upgrades at Old Lenora High School, auditorium, gym, Matt Cook Stadium. So looking into that, as well as $15,000 to continue to assist our downtown in redevelopment. Additional highlights, fiduciary responsibility, we do not use any fund balance in the proposed budget. We're maintaining a 50% fund balance, which exceeds our current goal of 24%. Sidewalk and greenways and trails, $75,000 for those projects, as well as we're trying to go back and get the Hospital Avenue sidewalk project moving forward. I know this year is looking like acquiring right away, and then once we go from there, hopefully in the coming months and years, working with the COG to go back and make sure the funding's still there, get that implemented. North Main Street Plan, we allocate CDBG money to start paving Greenway Trail, starting at Main Street, working toward downtown. Fairfield South Plan, we're going to leverage EPA grant funds for environmental assessments, and as you're aware, we've got a $300,000 EPA brownfield assessment grant. It's, property changed hands this past week due to that grant, and I think you'll see more of that as this goes forward. We're also allocating ARC funds to clean up the Virginia Street property we own, the 14, 15 acres we have on College of Virginia. We got a $300,000 grant ARC. We're matching that with 250 from the city to go back and get into cleanup of that property to get that back in productive reuse. Code enforcement, we have $24,000 for building demolition, $12,000 for nuisance removal, and $2,000 for strategic foreclosure expenses. In addition to that, we supplant that with other monies over the year to go back and make sure we try to address that as a priority issue for the city. Technology, we continue with our IT upgrades. We also, in the budget, fund the advanced metering infrastructure project, replacing all the water meters. That's been approved by the local government commission, and that should be taking place in the coming months. Environmental issues we're addressing. This starts the funding of the bio solids project, the wastewater treatment plant, $6.6 million project that we discussed over the last little bit, but hopefully this fall, we'll get that kicked off. Also, this budget, as we've talked about, it committed the whole a few times. This outsources our stormwater management program and the oversight of that to the Western Carolina, or Western Puma council governments. They're creating a stormwater partnership of all the cities in Caldwell County, as well as some cities in Burke and Catawba, to go back and start addressing that in a regional type of approach. This budget also funds all debt obligations. Some of the highlights, patrol cars, four detective cars, two we normally buy used there, continued to, first floor City Hall updates, as I mentioned earlier, a brush truck. This year is the year of roofs. We're replacing the roof at Public Works, Police Department, Fire Station Number Two. Also doing a rehab of attendance court at Martin Luther King, doing some equipment upgrades at Mulberry Gym, and a diesel fuel pump. Highlights in water and sewer, two mud pumps, software upgrade, two raw water pumps, metal wood pump repair, a trench box, five replacement vehicles, utility trailer, sampling equipment, sludge holding tank, and guess what, another roof. This roof here will be at the ROTHIS Water Plant. We got, well, Radford, you should collect that water and treat it. Instead of roofing, roofing, you can collect that water and treat it.
Recycle.
But in summary, our primary goal, and I say this often, but each and every day, our goal is through our employee-led customer service initiative, is to provide a service beyond measure. And that's our daily focus. I want to thank Donna Bean. She spent numerous, countless hours working on this with our department directors. Appreciate all their support in Team Lenora. We know this budget doesn't address everything we want, but I think we try to prioritize what we spend to meet what the council's goals are and the goals of our staff. And thank you for your leadership. As I said earlier, we have a budget work session scheduled Thursday night at 6 o'clock, Committee of the Whole meeting May 28 at 8:30 AM, and our public hearing scheduled for June 4, 6:00 PM in these chambers. A copy of the budget is online. You can go online right now if you want to look at it. And again, if you can't sleep at night at home or here, you can go back and go online and look at each line item. But it's at our website, civilnor.com/ budgetproposal. So with that, I'll take questions now. We can start Thursday night.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Hildebrand, or any department head at this time?
Not yet.
Not yet.
And we'll go much more detail as we go forward.
We've got to read it. We've got to go through it first.
You want to vote?
Thank you, Mr. Hildebrand, for your hard work, and all the department heads who are part of this, and all of our employees. We appreciate it. Donna, thank you for a lot of hard work. I know as of yesterday, you were still putting all this together. Yesterday afternoon, when I was up there. Okay. So we appreciate everyone's input, hard work, things. I know you know that there's a lot of things we need that we sometimes are not there yet, but we prioritize everything we can and try to take it. And then, of course, we know something will come up and throw everything out of kilter, but we hope that it will follow pretty close with what we're doing. So again, thanks for all the input and work it has taken to put this together. So we'll need a motion to call for a public hearing on June the 4th, at our June the 4th meeting. So move. Motion from Mayor Pro Tim Willis, that we will call for the public hearing on the budget for June the 4th meeting. Any discussion? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, we will then go and report from our city attorney. I know, Mr. Rohr, you have something to talk to us about in a closed session, so.
Yeah, we'll need to go into closed session to preserve
Yeah, we'll need to go into closed session to preserve attorney-client privilege to discuss pending litigation. When you're ready for the motion, I'll explain that in more depth.
Okay. Let's go. I'll finish the council members and the mayor, and if there's anything, we'll come back to that. The only report I would have is, again, we're nearing our downtown Chargers of Freedom. It's looking great. If you haven't been up to see it, it looks fabulous up there, thanks to our Public Works Department and all those involved there. Jared has taken a great involvement in it, and it looks fantastic. It's something we're all going to be proud of. Our school system for putting it together and doing the masonry brickwork to it. It looks like we are targeting July 3rd to have the dedication for it, which is right on target. We decided the 4th might not be the greatest day because there's so many things going on. So the 3rd, we hope, will fit better. So we will target a time for that. We don't have that set with the foundation forward yet, but we'll get that done. So Brian, let anybody know about that. We invite a lot of people to come out and celebrate that with us on that very, very special day of doing that. So again, thanks for all the work on that. Anybody on the council have anything they need to add at this time? Okay, Mr. Attorney, we'll come back to you for-
We would need a motion under NC GenStat 143-318.11A3 to preserve attorney-client privilege to discuss pending litigation. The cases in question are James Dean Eker versus the City of Lenore, Lodo Greenlee Cavaness, and Scott Hildebrand, and the case of PB Realty LLC versus David L. Williams, Doris E. Williams, Pacific Western Bank, Carolina Trust Company, and the City of Lenore. And no action, maybe 15 minutes.
Okay. You heard the recommendation then from our city attorney and the, all the appropriate nomenclature that goes with that, to go into that. I need a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go into closed session to discuss said issues.
Okay. Have a motion for Councilmember Stevens to go into closed session to discuss said issues. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Thank you. We, I don't think we will have something coming out. Thank you, everyone, for being with us this evening. We're glad that you're here. And we will, if you want to stay, you're welcome to. If not, we'll see you down the road.